And we'll just continue to admit people as they come in, but we want to be prompt here. Welcome, everybody. I'm Kevin Foy, Director of the Office of Lifelong Formation. Really excited that people are joining us today and we're excited to talk about the main topics of our meeting today, our Town Hall. It's been a little bit since we've had one. We are going to begin, as we begin all things in prayer, and for that Javier Castillo from Vicarious Four is going to be leading our prayer. So I'll commit over to you Javier.
Thank you, Kevin, and welcome everyone. And I'm going to be sharing with my screen with all of you, especially just having the today's reading, there are two texts really made me think and pray about it, especially for today's topic is really interesting. And continue reading from the Gospel, today's Gospel from Luke about Socrates and then Revelation, talking about the, the, our actions, our human acts, or works that we do. So let us put our presence in God's presence, thinking about this beautiful day. I know some people are going to call it this beautiful. Yes, it is. Just thinking about how God even is touching our lives, ourselves, our minds, our eyes, even our hair with a snow. And just letting the creation to take care of ourselves, to show us God's love. Bring it together in your mind and your heart, to today's intention. What exactly you were able to see God this morning through the people through the window, through maybe a phone call or email. And just thinking about to, for the people who are in need of maybe food, maybe care, maybe love. Maybe somebody needs a prayer for today, today. Maybe someone needs just phone call or use a simple text saying, I love you. Look at love you. Then we started then about the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. And thinking about those people that we know, who are in contact with us. Listen to their names or their saints on God's hands. And continuing this way in the book of Revelation, God says, I know your works. I know what you are neither cold nor hot. I wish you were either colored hot. So because you are looking warm, neither hot nor cold. I will spit you out of my mouth. Really strong words. They're making us think and reflect. Sometimes we are praying and thinking and serving in God's church and we realize that God's love isn't conditional. God loves us for everyone. If every time that we receive Jesus Christ's body and blood in, in our mouth, in our body, we became like him to be able to show love, to be able to even to show care, caring for other ones. And that's why connecting with this one with the Gospel and Socrates. So in the same look when he is visiting very cold and Jesus just looking at the tree and he talks to Socrates. And Socrates, come down quickly. For today I must stay at your house. You just made me think about and reflect. He's asking me, Jesus Christ is asking me to be like him, to act, to love like him. And it doesn't matter what. People knew Socrates. And God and Jesus knew him. And after these words, the simple words, come down quickly. For today I must stay at your house. Jesus is talking to us. He doesn't see what it actually is in our minds and our hearts that is totally opposed in his will. He's asking us even to be like him. And he's asking us to look at myself, my inside. He's going to stay in my house. How I'm preparing this house? I'm doing God's works. I'm cold. I'm hot. How does my heart? Reflecting and, and bringing to God's presence ourselves, but again, bringing those people who, who needs our prayers, who needs our care. God needs our mouths, our eyes, our hands to be able with him, to be even, to show him in those people. Even to, to, to put our hearts warm, or maybe hot. I'm going to invite you to pray together, putting all our intentions, placing our, the names of the people that we know in Jesus Christ's hands. Let us pray together. If you can mute your microphones would be nice. Just if we pray as a people of God, one community together, our Father.
Heaven. All of people.
Be thy name.
By kingdom come. That I will be done. No. That is just heaven. Give us this day our daily bread and forgive us our trespasses as we forgive those. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. Amen.
In the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit.
Thank you Javier. Well, that prayer was, was, as you alluded to, really, I think, perfect for the topic of our conversation today. For those who joined during the prayer, again, I'm Kevin Foy, Director of the Office of Lifelong Formation. And I was really heartened to see all the interest in our topic today for this Town Hall meeting. And I think it speaks to, um, maybe heartened and also, you know, just saddened by the reality of it is a pressing concern, you know, racism and how we as a church lead people through that in light of church teaching and the gospel. But we also today want to talk a little bit, as always, about Renew My Church and kind of thinking about then what we call building the new reality. And we'll start there briefly. And I think that's also speaking to Javier's prayer, you know, being on fire for this new church that we're, that we've, you know, all together collectively worked so hard to this point to be in a position to enact and create and be real living witnesses within our archdiocese of Chicago community. So to on that note, I will introduce Katie Bach. She is the Director of Implementation for the Building the New Reality Phase of Renew My Church. And that's really the phase coming out of all the structural, operational stuff to really make an evangelizing community out of our parishes. And a community of witness and hope and light and welcome and hospitality going forward. So Katie, take it away.
Awesome. Hi, everyone. It is so good to be with you. And like Kevin said, I have the privilege of leading the team of Parish Vitality Coordinators and Lifelong Formation coordinators, many of whom were, are on this call with us today, and then some of whom could not be with us. But I really wanted to take the time. I know earlier in the year, some of the members of our team touched on some of the key tenants of renewal. And then I was out on maternity leave and then we had a little bit of a gap since we last met. So what I wanted to do is spend just a couple of minutes in talking through some resources of ways that you can engage with what is going on and building the new reality. So I don't know, Tiana, if you have the slide or if I have screen sharing privileges.
If you need me to do it, I can.
Sure, that'd be awesome. So I wanted to just share one very quick slide to show you some of the resources that we have out there, one to get you inspired and hopeful and connected to the work that we're doing. But also to give you information, right? So that in your own work, you can start to incorporate some of these key tenants that you'll learn from these resources. So the next one or two minutes here that I'll talk is certainly just the very, very, very tip of the iceberg. Your absolute best resource will certainly be your Lifelong Formation Coordinator as a first point of contact. But again, I wanted to route you to our archdiocese website and show you a couple of things. So the first one, and all of these are linked and we can send these out after our conversation. But the first one is the Building the New Reality Getting Started videos. So you might want to watch these as you, as an individual or your parish, maybe taking initial steps in building the new reality phase. And, and these should get you going, get you thinking about what we're working on. They are very kind of great first steps to take around hospitality and welcoming as we all kind of move what we consider from maintenance to mission. So again, all these will be linked and we'll send them out. The second row there where you see Cardinals picture is, is an intro to Renew My Church, right? So you might have attended an RMC info session. Some of you on this call might have been on your grouping team as, as your parish moves through decisions and discernment. But this video really talks about our vision of renewal and where it is being lived and breathed across our archdiocese. So it's a really, really tremendous resource. It's really well done. And you hear firsthand those stories of witness. And you might use it as you consider, you know, what renewal looks like in your own context. And, and as you start to dream about kind of moving your parish and your work into mission, that would be another great resource. And then the last one, if you're more of a reader, is our RMC brochure. So again, a really, really beautiful piece of literature that took a long time to, to write because we really felt passionate and committed about getting it right. So this one you might use to just really learn about what we're doing, why we're doing it, how we're going to do it. And this will really get you and yours interested and excited about the work that's happening. And so Tiana, we can send this out after. So everyone has the live links. But really just dipping our toe in the water about what some of the assets out there are for each of you to take advantage of. And I really, really want to just encourage you to get out there, become familiar with them, take some time to spend with them. And then, like I said, if you have any questions, your best and first point of contact will be your Lifelong Formation Coordinator. And then they can route you from there. So thank you for just listening to me for a little bit. Thank you for your work and your commitment to renewal and all of the exciting things that, that are happening. The good news is things are happening and we're super excited about where we're seeing the fruits of renewal come through in the parishes that we're working with.
All right. Fantastic. Thank you, Katie. There will be time for questions at the end for either of our two topics, but I think we want to dig into the main main event of this Town Hall. As you saw from the invitation, hopefully the bulk of the, the next piece of this meeting, it's going to be previewing a resource that hopefully will be out by the end of this week or early next week. We're just in the fiery final stages of review, but substantively will be not much different from what you see previewed today. And we really wanted to give you a chance to walk through it with us and you know, get your initial questions answered, any initial guidance on how to use it before that you actually receive it in your, you know, inbox through our email end of this week or next week. I, before we do that, I just want to give a little context. So this document is sort of a guide for adults in ministry and others that you work with to really reflect on, understand, internalize, discuss. Not only the core teachings of the church on racism, but really runs the gamut from understanding how the church defines racism in many of its different iterations, how the Archdiocese of Chicago understands racism and the, the challenge of addressing it and the call to address it. Examples of saints and witnesses who can service kind of guideposts for doing so. How we put it in the context of the broader Catholic social teaching and the call to recognize the dignity of human beings. Where this comes from is I'm sure, as you all recall, there was a lot of energy around this topic, yeah, towards the beginning of the pandemic, actually, with, you know, the death of George Floyd. And, you know, just so you know internally, that sparked a number of things within the archdiocese that prompted the creation of an anti-racism racism task force that meets monthly. And this is one of the resources we've been working on. And you may say, oh, it's taken a while. Well, you know, it's taken a while to really discern what's needed, what can we offer? But then also go through the process of making sure what we offer is not only accurate to church teaching and the archdiocese and I trust in pastoral view, but also representative of different communities who have a different lens on this topic and are touched by it in different ways. So this document has gone through many levels of review. Constituencies representing the Black Catholic Initiative, Latino ministries, Asian Catholic ministries, the Kateri Native American Center. It really has gone through many levels just to make sure that it's not only accurate, but really reflecting the different sensibilities of our diverse community. And, you know, speaks to a real need. We've also had catechetical leaders review it just to make sure it's helpful. It's, it's something that's going to be of use and in reflecting on these questions and discussions. It's pretty comprehensive. It's not a, it's not a cheat sheet. It's not a, and it's not something you hand to a parent or you hand to a kid and say, here, just do this. It really is primarily designed for us as ministers, as leaders to do the work so that we, and I would say two things, and then I will stop talking. One is just to reflect and internalize ourselves. We know that we're witnesses of the faith. And it's very hard to witness and guide others in something you haven't stepped back and grappled with yourself. And really kind of seeing where your understanding needs to grow, where your blind spots are. And that's something I think we've all hopefully done throughout our lives, but especially in the past two years, as, as these issues have come to the forefront. And secondly, we know that racism, like many topics, is, can be politicized. It can be seen like something that's part of the culture and it's sometimes unclear. What does it have to do with our role as ministers or catechists or however you identify? And so really wanting to make sure that people feel that they're on solid footing. You know, I think that's always a challenge with a, it's not a politicized issue is that you want to make sure that as a minister in the church, what I'm representing is the understanding, the sensibility of the church. And that I really could, can say, speak confidently that when I say, you know, racism is a sin, for instance, that that's something that's grounded in something I've read and understand to be an authentic representation of church teaching. And I can say what that means, right? When I say racism is a sin, I can say racism is a sin because of this, because of the scripture, because of this catechetical teaching, because of this doctrinal pronouncement. And so we really wanted to make sure we had a resource that was helpful in that sense. So hopefully that's helpful as context. I know that was kind of blah, but it's, I do think it is important to know what, what this is for and where it's coming from. And that it's really, it is one resource. It is a one starting point potentially. It's not the end of the conversation and it's not the full slate of what you might offer in a parish or use, but we do think it is a pretty strong starting point for reflection, study and discussion to really understand these issues and how they intersect with our faiths as Catholics. So one of the people, really one of the primary people who's been responsible for shepherding this through and making sure it happens. It gets created and vetted and that all feedback is accounted for and things are removed that people are uncomfortable with. Things are added that people think will be helpful has been Deborah Breaky, who many of you know as our senior coordinator for children and family ministry. So she's going to do a walkthrough on it. It's really a dual resource. It's a study kind of resource and then a parish implementation guide. So she's going to, going to give you the preview of it. So you can know what to expect and kind of ask your questions but ahead of receiving it in final form, like I said, hopefully very soon.
Great. Thanks, Kevin. Yes, as Kevin said, it's, it's quite comprehensive. There's two aspects of the resource we're providing. The first one, the main resource guide is 18 pages. And then the parish implementation document is 10 pages. So what I'm going to do first is screen share the main resource guide and just kind of walk you through it step by step to just acclimate you to the format of the guide and so that you can see the various pieces that are in there. And then from there, I'll, you know, show you the parish implementation and then we'll, after that, open it up for questions and conversation. So you should be seeing my screen now. So the resource guide, we've titled Catholic Social Teaching and the Call for Racial Justice. A resource to help form communities that believe, act, and teach justice as true missionary disciples of Jesus Christ. You can see from our table of contents. We will have at the beginning of the document, a letter from Cardinal Supich, his comments on it, a brief introduction. And then the document is really structured into three sections. The first section looks at the Archdiocesan vision and mission for racial justice, along with documents from the USCCB and the Vatican as well. And then each section, we end with some reflection and discussion questions to kind of process the information that was presented. The second section is on Catholic teaching and social justice, where we point to the catechism, the directory for catechesis, the corporal and spiritual works of mercy and the Ten Commandments. And then the third section, we turn to sacred scriptures, saints and witnesses, saints and witnesses and prayers. And then in the conclusion, we hyperlink to the document with the parish implementation models. Okay. So in the introduction, I've highlighted some various things throughout the document that I just wanted to highlight, you know, read through to provide a little more information. So the purpose of the comprehensive resource guide is to support parish leaders and other parish ministers in the archdiocese, informing staff, volunteers, students, and families in the foundational teachings of the Catholic Church, as Kevin alluded to. And so these teachings will reinforce the call for racial justice. We begin the document by offering some context so we can clearly define, as Kevin mentioned, what is racism? So here we turn to the USCCB document, Open Wide Our Hearts. And we elaborate on the various aspects that define racism, where racism occurs, what it can look like, where it can be found. So that when we engage in conversations, we're all clear on exactly what we're talking about. And we're, you know, all started from the same understanding of definition racism. After that, we define Catholic social teaching. So again, we can all have a same starting point and framework that we go from. At the bottom of this page, we see, since Catholic social teaching affirms the inherent dignity of each person, we find within it critical elements for working to end racism, which does violate human dignity. The church's social, social teaching proposes principles for reflection. It provides criteria for judgment and it gives guidelines for action. So this catechetical document is anchored in church teaching and draws the connection on how Catholic social teaching can help individuals to eradicate racism in our personal lives, parish communities, and world. After the introduction, we go to the first section. Again, I mentioned this is the Archdiocesan vision is where we began. If you recall, Cardinal Supich had written that letter back in May of 2021, which was directed to school educators and parish catechists. And he encouraged parish and school educators to build up communities centered on peace and justice. And he commended parish and school educators dedication to opening doors for peaceful dialogue around racial justice in our Catholic communities. So, you know, we referred to his comments there and then we go into the USCCB document. Open Wide Our Hearts, The Enduring Call to Love, A Pastoral Letter Against Racism. I'll note that wherever you see the red bold text within the document itself, that's a hyperlink. So you can right click on it and then open it in another, in the web browser or as a new document. So those are all hyperlinks within the document. You can see as we go through, there are many hyperlink resources for you. So in this section, as I mentioned, we, you know, explore some quotes and phrases from Open Wide Our Hearts from the US bishops. In 1979, the US bishops had a pastoral letter on racism called Brothers and Sisters to Us. So we pull out some information from that document as well. And at the end of most sections, we then offer a call to action for parish leaders. You know, you can see here where it says, we encourage parish, parish staffs and ministry volunteers to spend time reading these documents. Or we have some hyperlinks below that, that's, you know, under the to assist individuals and parish leaders. There are some more resources. So after we give some information, then we give you some tools to kind of process and work with that information, some encouragement. We have Vatican documents. So in 2004, the Vatican produced a compendium of the social doctrine of the church. This presents a systematic overview of the fundamental framework of Catholic social teaching. And it also provides the information needed to address the social issues of our day from a Catholic Christ-centered lens, which will ensure that dialogue remains focused on the dignity and good of all persons. So we pull out some quotes from the compendium as reference. Additionally, in 1998, the Vatican had a document, The Church of Racism, towards a more fraternal society. We pull some quotes from that as well. And then, as I mentioned, in the overview, we have reflection and discussion questions in each section. So you can see here, these questions are all related to the topics and themes that came up in either Cardinal Supich's letter, the USCCB documents, the Vatican documents. And this gives groups, individuals opportunity to ponder, you know, what they've read through there, what was presented to them. And just kind of, you know, process these questions and then have a good discussion around them as well. In section two, we focus on Catholic social teaching on social justice. So Catholic social teaching is a gift that affirms equal human dignity for all peoples. Racism, on the other hand, runs counter to the principles of Catholic social teaching. So by reflecting on the social justice themes of respect for the human person, equality and differences among men and human solidarity, we began to see more clearly how racial justice is connected to the social doctrine of the church. So in this section, we look at each of those overarching themes of social justice from the context of the sources of the catechism, the directory, the corporal and spiritual works of mercy and the Ten Commandments. So to give you an idea of how this section is structured, we look first to the catechism of the Catholic Church. And you can see the subheadings, Respect for Human, for the human person, Equality and Differences Among Men, and then Human Solidarity. We get a, give a little catechesis, you know, behind each of those themes based on that resource. And then again, we have a call to action, some further information for parish leaders related to that specific resource and the themes, you know, that, that come through there. Then we turn to the directory for catechesis again, under those three subheading themes. And then there's for deeper engagement, more information and resources related to the directory for catechesis. Then we turn to the corporal and spiritual works of mercy. We have some information under each of those three themes as well there. And we have some more resources available related to the corporal and spiritual works of mercy. And then we turn finally to the Ten Commandments and Respect for the Human Person there. Equality and Differences Among Men and Human Solidarity. Again, those three main themes. And we provide some more resources. And then we have a brief summary of that section. And we again, provide questions and response areas for personal reflection and then group discussion. The final section of this document turns to sacred scripture and the tradition of the saints as they offer valuable insights into framing how we think, pray, and act as individuals and communities of faith who are committed to racial justice. Sacred scripture provides a sure guide for reflection on racial justice that is centered on the timeless teachings of Jesus Christ rather than on current popular views. As such, it offers clear examples for guidance for opening ourselves up to living as disciples of Christ who demonstrate God's love for every person. So this hyperlink, these scripture verses, I've pulled it up in another window here. So we have a PDF with scripture verses available for you. The red again are hyperlinks to those verses. It's a few pages long, you know, parishes can choose which scripture verses they might use for reflection or prayer. It's a few pages long, you know, parishes can choose which scripture verses they might use for reflection or prayer. So that's available. There's more information related to that in these paragraphs. Then we turn to Saints and Witnesses. Numerous Catholic saints have taken bold risks while working for racial justice. So we have stories of saints and witnesses that offer another avenue of inspiration for parish groups as you envision a way forward that's dedicated to honoring human dignity of all people. Again, but let these saints and witnesses, that hyperlink is going to look like this, and it'll have three paragraphs of different saints to reflect on their action, their lives. And then we turn to prayer. We offer a few recommendations of some prayer methods, as well as the text of some prayers that will help you to begin and end your meetings with a spirit of prayer and reflection. So we have a PDF of prayers, peace, and unity. And that's going to look like this. It's a separate PDF document. It's got, you know, different prayers that you could select from for your meetings. In the prayers section, we also have, you know, the traditional prayers of the rosary, stations of the cross, scripture reflections, all related to overcoming racism and racial justice. And then finally, for this third section, we offer again questions for reflection and discussion. And then in the conclusion, as I mentioned, where you see these parish implementation suggestions, this is where we offer sample timeframes for using the content of this main resource guide to form your staff, volunteers, and parishioners through various meeting structures. So this is hyperlinked here, and when you click on that, you will see the second document. Now, this one is 10 pages long. So I'll go through this one briefly, and then we'll open it up for, you know, conversation. So you can see here, it says Parish Implementation Suggestions. That's how you're going to distinguish the two documents. The table of contents on this one, we offer just again, a brief introduction, parish implementation and practical recommendations, some sample timeframes of what it might look like in your parish if you're having some meetings, maybe some agendas and schedules we offer to, you know, just help you envision what it might look like for you when you, you know, embark on this at your parish. And then we also have some recommended next steps and further study. So after you've done your initial exploration of this and you want to go further, we have some resources there as well. In the introduction, we just kind of point back to the main resource guide, give people the context of that. And again, you know, walk you through just the structure of it so that you're aware of what that structure is, just as a reminder. On this first page, we also have hyperlinked the reflection questions that I scrolled through in the main document. Here, they're all together as one PDF. You can see Section One, here are the questions. Section Two, here's a little intro, and here are all the questions. So here you have all the questions in one PDF as a handout, if you were to have a meeting, you know, that you could use. Have them simply all in one place. And we'd like to stress also that parish leaders are encouraged to select and use the resources and reflections within the resource guide in the manner that you feel is best suited for your specific parish community. So for example, one parish might desire to take an in-depth look at the resources and information from the USCCB, you know, maybe with a four-week study on one of the USCCB documents. Whereas focusing on the lives of the saints who worked against the sin of racism in like a monthly series of presentations, that might be more fruitful for another parish community. So really, you know, it's just a matter of reviewing the main guide and seeing where your community is at at this time and what resources would work best for them and just kind of adapting it for your use. Again, as Kevin had mentioned, the primary audience for this is adults. So we recommend that parish leaders invite catechists, parents, other ministry leaders, parish volunteers, to participate in a variety of meetings or discussions about racial justice. Again, we recommend you look through these and take time to reflect on the needs of your community, and then consider the topics that people will be open to and what they would most likely respond to at this time. Addressing racism is an ongoing effort that must have, as its focus, the building of a community of disciples of Christ who follow the commandment to love one another. And to ensure that focus, prayer should always be given priority of place. So if you recall, you know, the PDF with the different prayer options that we have for you. Additionally, we want to ground people in a life-giving dialogue. So when you're pulling people together and having a meeting that leads, you know, into discussion, we want to make sure that that dialogue is fruitful in life-giving. So we have some tips here from Pope Francis Amoris Letizia. Okay, so for life-giving dialogue. We also have hyperlink in this last paragraph, a document that could be used as a handout for your groups. Just on life-giving dialogue, you have some best practices for dialogue that lead to conversion and action. So this is just a one-page document that can help your group ground their conversations in a positive way. Okay, from there, we get into some practical recommendations. These are pretty straightforward, and, you know, it might seem obvious, but sometimes it helps to just have that, you know, laid out in front of you. I think there might be about six or seven steps.
Pardon me, Deborah. Will it be time for questions at the end?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm trying to run through here. I'll be.
Sorry for dropping you. Okay.
So the first thing, the first step would be know your audience, you know, whether it's your pastoral staff, your ministry volunteers, or parents. As you can imagine, you're going to approach things differently depending on who that audience is. So this gives you a little information on how to approach, you know, different audiences. Some recommendations for selecting the resource or topics that you're going to explore. Step three, you know, schedule and plan your meetings or events. Step four would be to publicize, promote, or share any materials ahead of time. Step five would be hosting the meeting, and then step six would be evaluating. We encourage parish leaders to use these following samples to help plan meetings that might meet the needs of your community. So for example, if you were going to do a two-hour facilitated discussion at your parish on maybe a few topics from the resource guide, you might start with a welcome, start with one of the prayers from that prayer PDF, the options on that. You might select just one of the topics from any section of the resource guide and give a brief introduction to that, and then allow for time for reflection and discussion. Then you might introduce a second topic from any section of the resource guide. Again, allow reflection and discussion time. And then maybe select a third topic from anywhere in the resource guide and reflect and discuss that. Then you might finish with some, you know, action steps for the group of something you might want to do going forward. And then closing with Lexio Divina with our prayer, the Sacred Scripture PDF, where we give you various options of scripture. So that could be, you know, just a one-time two-hour meeting. You could do it like that, or you could, you know, adjust that any way that fits your typical meeting schedules at your parish. We offer three agendas, if you wanted to do maybe a series of three meetings. So, you know, maybe in the first meeting, you'd want to delve into the Archdiocesan vision and mission for racial justice, and then the USCCB document, Open Wide Our Hearts. Maybe those are, you know, the things you'd talk about that night, and then you'd have reflection and discussion, and maybe give people homework. And then the next meeting, if, when they come back, you might review the first meeting topic, and then maybe introduce something from that second section of the resource guide where we talked about the Catholic teaching on social justice from the Catechism or the Directory for Catechesis. And then reflect and discuss that, and maybe offer homework there on the Catechism. And then the third one, maybe you would choose something from the Sacred Scripture, Saints, and Prayer section of the resource guide, and just explore that in your third meeting. These are just ideas to help you kind of start to envision what it could look like. For those meetings, you might have a welcome, an opening prayer, a brief introduction or review, and then your main topic presentation for 15 minutes, and review and discussion for 15 minutes or so. And then just go into action steps and close again with Lexio Divina. This is the last section of the Parish Implementation Guide, where we offer next steps and further study. So the main resource guide, as Kevin had said earlier, is a starting point, right? This is just a starting point for your parish efforts at addressing the sin of racism. We encourage parish leaders to envision next steps that individuals, groups, and the parish at large will take. So we've offered some recommendations here just to help you brainstorm what direction your parish might like to go as you move forward from the main, you know, resource guide that we've offered. So of course, in anything you do, you know, first, you're going to create a strategic plan. Second, maybe use the resource guide, and then from there, host regular meetings or events. And then for further study, we have about nine different topics. Again, all the red bold texts are hyperlinks. So these are additional topics to what has been presented in the resource guide if you want to explain or explore any area even further. Okay, so there's just, you know, some other resources there. Okay, so that's the really quick overview, just so you can have a sense of the structure of both documents, how they work together, how you can work with them. So now we can just kind of throw it out there for comments, questions.
Hand raising feature too. We'll try to call on people if you use the hand raising emoji. But you can also just offer. So I'm sorry to interrupt whoever was speaking.
Deacon Benjamin, go ahead.
Okay, I might have missed this in the beginning, but is this going to be translated into different languages as well?
Oh, thank you. I didn't mention that. Yes, we will be translating into Spanish and Polish. As you can imagine, that's going to take a bit of time, given the length of these documents, but we are, we're working on that.
So next week.
Yeah, you got that right. Sure.
Oh, thank you. That was my one question. Sorry about that.
Great, thanks.
Questions?
Or just reactions, or, you know, any feedback or thoughts you might want to share. And I'll also add that when we do send this out, and you do have time to really kind of, you know, take some time to look through it on your own and process what's there, you can always reach out after that with questions, comments, requests, you know, anything at that point, once you've really had a chance to look at it, because I know it's a lot in this overview.
Can I ask, is this, what, is this program through what department?
This is, oh, go ahead. Or do you want me to go, Deborah?
Go ahead.
This is initiative under the Anti-Racism Task Course of the Archdiocese. So that actually represents multiple departments of the Archdiocese focused specifically on how the Archdiocese addresses racism. That went into the Office of Life Information, Human Dignity and Solidarity, the Room of My Church Representatives, things of that nature, yeah. But it was primarily constructed in its current form by the Office of Life Information.
Okay, I was just wondering, because I did a two-and-a-half-day workshop on anti-racism with another group, so I was just wondering.
Oh, yeah, and I think, oh, I was just going to say, I think that's part of it. Obviously, you know, working with this document will take work, and we wanted to give that flexibility for you. But, you know, I think what we find with some of these issues is it's hard to move forward without a common grounding and
Right.
kind of understanding. And so even the fact that the cardinal's letter will be introducing it, just to make it very clear that this is a whole Archdiocesan document representing a vision that you can be confident reaches up to the cardinal, things of that nature.
And along those lines, I was going to say, this will be shared with the Office of Catholic Schools, you know, so that they can work with it in the ways they would like as well, you know, so it'll be available to them. And then through the Office of Human Dignity and Solidarity, they'll be sharing it out, you know, with.
Yeah. And, and so this, the document, I'm sorry, and I'm sorry, I came late. The document will be available for download, or is it being sent out?
Yeah, it's being, it's being finalized right now. The cardinal's letter is being inserted into it, and we're hoping by the end of this week or early next week to have it released to our distribution list. So hopefully on our mailing, you get those OLF monthly emails. You should receive this. If you receive the invite for this meeting, you'll receive it.
I'll get it. Okay, good. All right, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Is there good questions?
It's just funny that the last workshop I did on this was in 2004.
Oh, really?
Uh-huh, through Crossroads Ministry. Anti-racism training. That's why I just pulled it out from my thing, and I'm like, oh, okay, we're coming full circle again.
Thanks, Kevin and Deb. I have a quick question from the school's office. To what extent can this be a document that we share out with our school leaders to prompt in schools' conversation with adults, of course, teachers and staff around racial justice? I know it was written with a parish lens, and that's really important. And I'm wondering, to what extent you think it can be shared out with school leaders? Been happy to take your guidance around that.
I would say the main resource guide, absolutely everything will be of value to parish, or to school leaders in that guide. Really, the only thing specific to parishes is the Parish Implementation Guide. And even still, there are pieces of that that will be valuable, you know, for the school leaders in structuring their meetings with their, with their teachers and adults. So I think there's a lot in that as well. Probably, yeah, there's, there's a very small amount that they might find not applicable for them.
Yeah, I would agree. And I think if, if at anything for school leaders, parish leaders, you know, as you can see with all the documents Deb was referencing, you know, hopefully that at least is a lot of work taken off the front of people having, well, what does Open Wide Our Hearts say? What does Catholic social teaching say? What does the Catechism say that like, it really, I think, cuts out a lot of the running around that I think a lot of us have done and tried to do in trying to figure out, what does the church say about this? What has the cardinal written about this? So hopefully for any leader, it just, and group of people discussing it, it just gives a really solid grounding without having to sift through a lot of stuff that's not relevant or germane to the immediate topic of racial justice.
Thank you for an excellent presentation. I just wanted to add the leaders I invite here at Five. I'm Patricia Melonowski, Life Information Coordinator. We have excellent leaders in Five, and it's still going to take work to address just the various audiences, giving higher levels of sensitivity and attention to our parents who really aren't familiar with church documents and may be a little standoffish. So it's going to take a broader team to expand, and it is under the umbrella of, you know, building and making missionary discipleships. So it's an excellent initiative for this year for when embrace, or if you can't get to it this year, to plan for maybe the summer and to really talk about it and see it, how it fits into the strategic plan of the parish and where your pastors are with building the new reality. So God bless you. Thanks for the great document.
Well, I don't want to keep people beyond. Thanks for your time. Please do, if you think of things, email either me or Deborah of, oh, I was wondering about this. And definitely, as Deborah said, as you, you know, after you receive the document, you know, we're here to help. We're here to, you know, look at what could be not only improved about the document, but if you're just looking for someone to talk through, okay, what, I'm excited about this, how could I use it? Or, you know, I want to talk through the implementation pieces. We really do want to be here to accompany you at whatever level you need to. We really do want to be here to accompany you at whatever level you need to get, to get this going. So you really do appreciate your time. We hope the resources are of use to you. And with, like I said, it's just, it's, it's a starting point. And for many of you, probably not even the starting point, but it's something to add to the conversation to help, you know, really move this forward and to the extent that you're comfortable with and able to with the people you work with and minister to.
Real quick, I threw my email in the chat in case anybody had further questions or wanted to reach out. Thanks.
Thanks so much. Have a good afternoon, everybody.
Bye-bye.
Thank you.